It is June 10th at 5 o'clock. We'll go ahead and get ready and begin the regular session for the Swain County Board of Education.
This evening, we're going to depart from what we normally do, which is to have our 1% students here and celebrate them. Obviously, they've gone home for the year, but some of our staff are going home until we can get them hired again, and that would be our retirees. So tonight, I'd like to celebrate some of our retirees. So Ms. Franklin, would you come up, please? Now, Ms. Franklin has worked at the high school in our foods program and has produced an amazing product with our students for a member of years. She came to us after a successful career in another place and has been really successful for us. Ms. Franklin, we love you, we love you, and we appreciate you, and now you have to stay by our way. (applause) Trina Stiles. Ms. Stiles is one of our E.C. teachers, and she may have one of the most difficult jobs in the whole district, and that is in a self-contained classroom. And she has done it with grace and with love, and her students love her, and I'm gonna make her proud out of this, Scotty. We just want you to know that we appreciate you, and thank you, thank you for coming to us late for lunch. (applause) Judy Klodin- Klon Edinger. Can't get that on my mouth.
I try with my name all the time.
Judy?
It's Klodinger.
Klodinger.
Large.
Large.
Hard.
That's true. That's true. She's so hard that she left us once and came back, and now she's decided to retire from us until she comes back again.
We don't move that way, Adam.
We're so thankful for you, Judy. Thank you so much. Kristi Hoxit Reynolds.
(laughing). That's a good song, though.
I'll take it back. Kristi Reynolds has been with us a long time, and Kristi saved my rear end once because she was teaching in 5th grade at East Elementary, and I was doing a project as a music teacher. And if it hadn't been for Kristi's help, that project would have never gotten done. Yes. She, uh, she's just a wonderful person, and she's double wonderful because she's married to Bill Reynolds and has lasted a long time. Thank you. Part of that. The Governor. Bill Reynolds has been with us probably as long as Jeremy Kennedy's been a school system.
In a way, he's had them.
Bill has been with us a long time, and he is one of the most faithful, one of the most caring people that you'll ever meet. We never have to worry about, about Bill being on time or doing his job, because he always has, and especially on the school bus. He is the right train, and Bill, we love you, but, and we're gonna miss you, so thank you for all your work. (applause) It's just a matter of who the state lets us. Would you all mind this evening coming and shaking their hands, and then let's get a picture of all of you together up here. Come on.
(inaudible) we've been a long time. We're very happy.
That's exactly right. (inaudible). We'll see what happens. If you all will take a couple of steps in this direction, and if the board could stand behind you. (inaudible). One, two, three. Thank you all. Thank you so much. (inaudible).
Joe Jackson.
Yeah.
She was Joe Jackson.
You know, he got, he got, hey, he got killed right there past the, you come down the big strip. Yep. There's the, where the store, the, the, the.
Was it the 4th, 90?
Right, you start up there, so he went off.
That was the fair.
Had that blue crown beard.
Yes.
Right. Yeah, he was always.
That's our celebration tonight, Mr. White. Next month, I don't know what we'll do, because it'll be July. We'll have fireworks.
We'll figure something out.
Okay.
Say we get.
We can have some Tommyisms.
We'll be in the plays and the prayer.
(inaudible) to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice brought.
Let's pray. Gracious heavenly Father, Lord God, we bear unworthy here before you this afternoon. God, thank you. God, for this beautiful day, Father, and we thank you, God, for these retirees, God, that's worked so long with our children, Father, and been faithful to our school system and have been a big help, Father, we're gonna miss them, Lord. Ask you blessings on them as they continue on, on their journey, Father God, and we pray for our school staff over the summer, Lord, just be with them, Lord. We pray for our students over the summer, Lord. God, be with them wherever, wherever and whatever might come their way, dear heavenly Father. We just ask you to watch over them and help them, God. Or help us as a school board, God, to make the decisions we need to make, God, for the good of our students, good of our school system, good of our county, dear heavenly Father, Lord God. May everything we do be pleasing in thy sight. In your name we pray. Amen.
I finish to call the meeting to order. The first item is the approval of the agenda. I have no additions or changes that I know of, okay? Is anyone else? Okay. And do I have a motion to approve the agenda? Motion.
So, take it.
Any further discussion? All in favor, by show of hand. Agenda's approved. Each year, our CTE program has to develop a plan or to review a plan, and Ms. Sneed is here this evening to share parts of that plan with you. Our plan is quite large, and you can see that online, as can anyone else. I believe I shared it out there with you this afternoon.
Good evening. So what I've given each of you today is just a little bit of a snapshot of what the plan talks about, but I believe that Mr. Sale has shared out the public-facing view of the CTE plan that if, that you guys will vote on. I think the CTE could be voting on that. But we are measured by these seven indicators, and as you see on the snapshot that I've given you, I've given you the benchmark data, the state goal, and then our actual number as well as the gap. And, you know, we're doing great in some of our areas such as the bottom two, which are our test scores and our project-based measurements for our courses in CTE. And then we're also doing really well in the credential part of our program, which is the 5S4, because, because all of our graduates typically do leave with some sort of credential. And the very bottom number on the far right is our current graduates. Out of 110 graduates, eight, nine, no, 81 of those students were concentrators. That means that they took a Level 1 and a Level 2 CTE course. And of, in those pathway courses, in the, by the time they're in the second level, we want them to leave us with a credential that will help them in the workforce. So if you were at graduation, or if you watched graduation online, that was the credentials they mentioned with OSHA, ServeSafe, AutoCAD, I'm trying to think, OSHA 30, OSHA 10, OSHA 10 Healthcare, General Industry. So we have a lot of credentials that we're putting out for students, and we're hoping to add more for next year, so we're really excited about that. Some of the areas for growth, our largest area for growth, is gonna be in our science. And we, this year, were able to purchase an animage table that we're gonna be rolling out for next year's curriculum, and students haven't been able to use it yet, but they're gonna be able to use it when they come back in August, and our science department's gonna use it as well. And we're hoping that will help with some curriculum, some content pieces, and can help bridge the gap in some of our science scores, because the science scores do reflect on the CTE program. So a lot of people don't really understand that, but the English 2 scores, Math 1, Math 3 scores, and Biology scores, they take those at different snapshots during the four years, and those count into our, into our performance goals for CTE. So that's why it's so important that we're all on the same page at the high school with curriculum and how we can support the different disciplines. Some things that I wanna highlight about the program is this, this past year, we received three grants. One of them was from the Tobacco Trust for the sorghum meal, and that'll be purchased this summer, and we'll be doing some of our first projects in the fall of that, and that'll be driven by a, by our tractor. So we'll be taking that to the farmstead as well as Darnell Farms, and our students will be making sorghum molasses on those days. We also received a Dogwood Health Grant, and that paid for classroom materials, the animage table, furniture, gas stoppings for our interns to be traveling. It also is paying for a printing lab for middle school, a small, small-scale printing lab, engineering kits for our middle school, and chrome boxes for our middle school. And then we received a grant for some online curriculum support through ICEV. It's an online platform for our CTE program, and our teachers are gonna be able to use that to help with their curriculum gaps as well. Next year, we're really excited about adding to our interns with the medical field. We've had some roadblocks with local healthcare interns because of MOUs and just policies within local healthcare facilities, but we've reached out, and Franklin's gonna host some of our interns, so we are going to expand some of our hours for our interns, so they may go and stay for longer in the afternoon and not travel as many days. But we've got gas money for them to do that through our Dogwood Health Grant, so we're excited about that. I think we've got potentially two students that are gonna be traveling to the Franklin Hospital to do that. We're also hoping to add credentials in animal science and agri-science with beef assurance and the youth quality care for animals. We're gonna add both of those credentials for students, and we're investigating forklift. So we're investigating that in welding right now, so we're excited about that. We added to our welding booths last summer, and that was, that was a great addition, because now we can have additional students in that class. And if you haven't been able to see that since last summer, they're more permanent welding booths, so you definitely should, should stop back, stop by and see us. Buck would love to, to show you all that we've done in there. We've had a new auto instructor join us in January, and he comes with a lot of knowledge. His name's Danny Weber. He taught for 13 years in South Carolina, so he is A.S.E. certified already, which has kinda been a little bit of a barrier with some of our past instructors, but we have him now hired through S.E.C., and he's with us part-time, so be sure and stop by and meet him. And then in health science, not only do we have the animage table, but we have VR equipment where you can put on headsets and be in the human body, and we've got some new software for that rolling out in the fall as well, so we're really excited. Today was our first day of summer camp for this year, and we've, we're hosting two camps this week. We have one camp next week, and I think we have three camps in July. So those are four or five-day camps for, for our middle school and high school students, and we've been really excited to have, to be able to host those this next year. This is through PRC 188 funding, and it does in this summer, so I'm not sure what that means for summer camps after this year, but our students have enjoyed it, and our staff has also enjoyed it. We've also had a great year with our CTSO clubs. We have had Skills USA go to regional and state competition. We've had a few students placed in the top five in teams as well. And then we have FFA that will be traveling week after next to state competition in Raleigh, and we're hoping that they do well. We wish them all the luck. And we're looking at bringing back, we didn't have HOSA this year, but we're looking at bringing back HOSA for next year with Ms. Roper, so that's where we're at. We have a lot of great things going on in CTE. We're really sad that Ms. Franklin is leaving us this year. She has been an integral part of the CTE program for years, and we are still looking for a, actually two teachers in CTE, 'cause we have a middle school teacher position open as well, but we are hopeful to fill those and move forward. Do you guys have any questions?
That animal science you're talking about, can they get like an associate degree or something through that?
Not an associate's degree. They could work on an associate's degree through S.E.C., but not necessarily just in animal science. No. But they can take some CCP courses related to that.
One thing I've always noticed about their department, when you're around some of those teachers in that department, now Franklin's already gone, so I can't bring her name up, but I guess. I always considered the smiley face there, there, that's good. They always get a good look on their face, they treat kids that way, and you just see a warm, child-centered department. I compliment you for that. I've been there a long, I have to have longer been there than that, but y'all do so much with so little.
We have a great.
Amazing what we did, we just have more resources, right?
That showed at graduation, how many kids, yeah, that was amazing.
I came over there feeling very.
Yeah. Great, great kids, great teachers, great community. Takes everybody, takes the businesses, it takes everybody, partnerships.
Any other questions? Anyone? Thank you, Ms. Sneed, very much. We'll be asking you to approve her, her annual report in just a little while, okay? We have several items tonight on the agenda that have to do with food and nutrition. There are some bids that you considered last year as also. Some of those are part of the co-op, which Swain County is a part of overall. And then after you look at those bids, or Michelle takes you through those, we need to, to decide if we're going to continue with CEP for next year, for all of our schools, or how you move forward with that, okay? And Michelle has some numbers for you on that, okay?
Hello. So, excuse me. For our school nutrition bids that I'm requesting that y'all approve for me tonight, the first is with U.S. Foods. That's where we get all of our food and supplies, and I'm part of the co-op, the Far West Co-op. We all go in together to try to get a better pricing, and that all goes to the state, and it's bid out through them. I'm also asking that the dairy be approved. I'm on my own with that one. We've had that bid, this'll be our fourth year renewing it. Next year, I'll have to take it out for a new bid and get more bidders on it. I also ask that you approve the Coke bid, and it is the third year out of the four years on that renewal. Coke is part of our co-op, too.
So what I'm hearing is we're renewing U.S. Foods, Coke, and is, is the pit, is that a renewal also, or is that new?
It is a renewal.
It is a renewal.
It'll be the last year that we get to renew it.
Okay. All right. Any questions about those?
There's no other, there's no other bids, because they're not required to be submitted for bidding till next year.
Yeah, and that's, that'll be a larger process.
Right. For the bids, once I do send it all out for bid, I'm allowed to renew it for four years after that. So, and next is our CEP. CEP is the Community Eligibility Program, and it allows for high-need schools to provide free meals for our students. Excuse me. It provides the lunch and breakfast at no cost. There is no free and reduced meal applications, which is a bonus, and all of the data that is used is from the prior year, from direct certs. And direct certs are mainly the food, no, excuse me, the food stamp children that qualify for that. That's how we get this. CEP funding is, reimbursement is based on ISP, and that is the percentage of the direct cert students. The state says for every 10 students that you have that qualify for this, there's usually six students out there that's not signed up for food stamps. They allow me to take that percentage and multiply it times my direct students, my direct certified students. So this coming year, it will be 94%, where last year, we were at 86%. So I'll get reimbursed extra this coming school year. The 94% will be reimbursed at the free rate, and 5.95% will be reimbursed at the paid rate. This year, my free rate is $4.33 for lunch, and the paid rate is 50 cents for each meal. And we all expect that to go up. The state will announce that sometime to July. Next slide. The benefits of our CEP program. This year, our CEP saved the parents almost $400,000. It also left us with no student debt. The year before, without CEP, we had two schools that had to pay for their meals, and we were looking at almost $42,000 in student debt, so. The CEP also increased our student participation, an average of 27%. That was an extra 66,863 meals that we served this year compared to last year without CEP. Next slide, please. This right here will show you the difference for breakfast at each school that we have with CEP versus non-CEP numbers.
So the, the bar to the left of each of those was last year, and the blue bar to the right is this year?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Yeah. Left is no CEP, right is the CEP numbers. That's a pretty big difference when you start looking at how many kids you're feeding. Next slide, please. And that's for breakfast. That was the hard one, to get people to eat. And these are our lunch numbers, too. Next slide. Y'all have any questions about CEP?
It looks like it was successful.
It was.
We voted on it last year, we didn't know how it was gonna go, but it looks like it.
Yes.
Very successful.
When you think about, our goals, RL, in my opinion, our goals were to increase participation rate, and it did. We're still operating with a deficit, but I was talking to Michelle about that. If all of our schools were, went back to a traditional free and reduced, the student debt number would climb from what it was last year as well. Now, that's, you'd have to make an assumption about how much that would, but you're still gonna be left with a deficit. Michelle has worked really hard with her staff this year to do two things that she could control. The number one is encourage students to eat, which I believe they've done. There's, there are still steps that we can take on that. And the other piece is to, to manage their expenditures as far as wages, and Michelle has done that this year as well, also actually not filling some positions and pulling in part-time or substitute work on them. So she's done her job, I believe.
And it looked like, if I understood right, there'd be, we would have a bigger percentage to be reimbursed next year than we did this year.
So I did run a few numbers, and if we got reimbursed on last year's participation numbers with this coming year's participation rate, it's an extra $90,000 that I would have brought in, so.
So, that'll help that deficit?
That would come close to erasing the deficit, maybe not all of it, but it'd be close.
It'd be close.
Yeah. I think it's been successful, and my recommendation is gonna be that we continue with this, mostly because it's providing something for our, our county that our families really need right now.
Yeah, that savings of $377,000 is for real.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay. You can buy a lot of hamburgers. Well, you used to can buy a lot of hamburgers.
Yeah, I said you can buy a lot of them.
Any questions for Michelle?
Good job.
Thank you, Michelle.
Thank you.
Appreciate all your hard work.
Thank you.
Now, Stephanie's gonna come and tell you where we're gonna spend all that money that we've saved.
Good evening. I really don't have that much in budget amendments. Of course, our next meeting, there'll be probably more of a significant amount, just because we'll be budgeted in for some of those, all of our PRCs that are guaranteed that we wait to the end of the year and budget for. But for right now, for the State Public School Fund, there is an overall increase of $53,069. We received an allotment last week of about $38,000 from DPI, and it had to do with a retirement adjustment, and so they just dropped the $38,000 in like 15 different PRCs. So that's the majority of this budget amendment, is just adjusting those programs for that increase allotment. And the other $15,000 was for our school business modernization. We still have a payment of $15,000 for our Tyler Munus implementation, and that'll be our final payment to them. And so they allotted us the $15,000 from DPI to pay for that. In the federal grants fund, there's an overall increase of only $13,489. We had an allotment of $15,675. DPI used part of their ESTR funds for the National Boards Certification Program, where they reimbursed teachers for their application fees to take the national boards, and that was new this year. Only the folks that did that this year were able to qualify for that, and then DPI did it on kind of a priority basis, and for most counties that were already like a low-wealth-funded, school received those funds. We were high priority, so we, we got that amount of money, $15,675. And then we had a reversion of $2,186 in Program Code 176. That was for a summer program for, it's called the Bridge Program, and we just did not have the, we, we had the program, but just didn't have the expenditures to expend all that funding last year. The other adjustments in the federal grants fund was just to reallocate between Purpose Codes and Object Codes, just trying to clean up some of those federal budgets before year end. Our capital fund, we had an overall increase of $40,000. This was the request that Mr. Sale had put forth to the county for Article 46 funds, for the additional funds to complete the baseball softball concession stand. And then in the special revenue fund, we had an overall increase of $13,000, and this was for the ag grant that Ms. Sneed spoke about for $13,000 from the Tobacco Trust for the sorghum meal. And the other adjustments were just reallocation by Purpose Code, and that was it for budget amendments. Any questions on those?
Go ahead. Go ahead, I'm sorry.
The $13,000 to, uh...
Yep.
A hundred thirty-two thousand, other government units, is that charged to the feds?
Um, in the federal programs, it is actually all. And then we had a reversion of twenty-one hundred and eighty-six dollars in Program Code 176. That was for a summer program for, it's called the Bridge Program. And we just did not have the, we, we had the program, but just didn't have the expenditures to expend all that funding last year. The other adjustments in the federal grants fund was just to reallocate between purpose codes and object codes. Just trying to clean up some of those federal budgets before year end. Our capital fund, we had an overall increase of forty thousand dollars. This was the request that Mr. Sale had put forth to the county for Article 46 funds, for the additional funds to complete the baseball softball concession stand. And then in the special revenue fund, we had an overall increase of thirteen thousand. And this was for the ag grant that Ms. Snead spoke about for thirteen thousand dollars from the Tobacco Trust for the sorghum meal. And the other adjustments were just reallocation by purpose code. And that was it for budget amendments. Any questions on those?
Go ahead. Go ahead, I'm sorry.
Thirteen thousand to.
That was.
A hundred thirty-two thousand. Other government units, is that charged to the Fed?
In the federal programs, it is actually our indirect cost and is that what you're talking about in the federal grants fund? Yeah.
Well, yeah, payments to other government units.
Yeah, that's how they code. It's a, it's a purpose code eighty-one hundred, but they also do indirect costs. So that's where we get a little over five percent for administrative cost from federal grants.
So that's coming to us?
That would come back to us, correct, as we spend those funds.
Anything else? Let's move on.
Okay, so next will be the insurance renewals for next year. We're requesting that we renew the insurance coverages with the same carriers as last year. Our auto insurance coverage is through the North Carolina School Board Trust. Our renewal premium would be sixteen thousand seven hundred and eighty-one dollars for the auto insurance portion, twelve hundred and eighty-nine dollars for the inland marine portion of that coverage, for a total of eighteen thousand seventy dollars. Last year, that premium was sixteen thousand one hundred and eighty-seven dollars, but we did have some additions of some vehicles to that policy. So there was really a minimal increase in that premium. For our general liability, that was through the, also through the North Carolina School Board Trust. It's general liability and Arizona emissions. And the renewal premium is eight thousand nine hundred and twenty-five dollars. That's a three percent increase over last year, which was eight thousand five hundred and eighty-three dollars. Workers' comp is also through the North Carolina School Board Trust and the renewal premium is seventy-five thousand five hundred and fifty-seven dollars. Our workers' comp is only to cover those employees who are funded locally or, or through our federal programs. The state covers workers' comp for those that are paid through state funds. That premium is based on four million dollars in payroll and the premium is actually going down, knock on wood. Our, yeah, our, we've had pretty good loss experience in the last couple of years. So our experience modification is going down from one point four seven to one point two four. So we will get a reduction in that premium. And then the cyber insurance, that's premium is thirteen thousand four hundred and eighteen dollars. It's a two point three percent increase over last year and that would be with Chubb. That's who we went with last year for that coverage as well. So just asking if we can just renew the current contracts for renewal with those carriers.
Stephanie, about how many employees does that workers' comp cover, do you know?
I don't, but it does cover, you know, all of child nutrition. It covers our maintenance staff. It, it also, you know, is covering the payroll related to like after-school programs. And then, like I said, like our Title I EC programs that are funded federally. But I don't know exactly the number because FTE wise, it's, it's a lot of percentages of, of some of the extended day programs that we have. Also some activity bus drivers, coaches, that sort of thing.
Any other questions for Stephanie? Okay, so we're going to be asking that you approve her budget amendments and the renewals that she has presented. But the next thing that I would like for Stephanie to present to you for your approval is something that's really important for our school system that will enable us to do some things that we haven't felt comfortable doing in the past. Stephanie's going to ask your approval to establish another bank account for the school system for a specific purpose. So I'll leave the descriptions to you, please.
Just here lately, you know, we've gotten a lot of grants from other sources. And a lot of times they ask, you know, for banking information, routing numbers, bank account numbers. Just because of the level of comfort to give out our banking information on our main bank account. Because we don't know, you know, the security of their programs and their, their, their database. So I proposed to Mr. Sale that we have another bank account that we would open for basically receiving funds in. And then we would just take the funds once they're received into that account and then transfer them to our main account. But just so that we're not giving out our banking information on our large accounts. So there's not really a board policy that requires approval, but usually with a bank, they like to see it in the board minutes that that has been approved. Mr. Sale and I will be the only signatories on the account. And it's just really, just, just as really a holding account to.
It's, it's a, I consider it a buffer. And I know that you like to use Venmo, okay? But, and, and a lot of people like to use the digital banking opportunities. But whenever you give that information out, you become susceptible to what Mitch has experienced and maybe the rest of you. And that is somebody gets your number and, and now you, you can't access your fund. We don't want the world to be able to do that to Swain County schools. So this is the buffer for that. And this can, in my opinion, and please correct me if I'm wrong, but we're talking about Maroon Devil Network. And using that. And we, see, we have to have a way to transfer funding from, if we use YouTube into the school system. And we've not been able to do that. With this account, we can do that now, okay? So like I said.
Or electronic tickets or anything?
All kinds of things that, that's, and it protects us. Stephanie has been very reluctant for us to move into that realm because she's wanted to protect our account security. And I think that she's very wise in that. This is a way for us to do that and be able to move into the next level.
Yeah, with our new student information system, there's going to be some opportunity for online payments from parents, also for ticket sales, that sort of thing. Once again, they were wanting banking information and just not comfortable giving that out. Had another grant application where they wanted us to put the banking information through a DocuSign document. And that's basically just sent over email. So, I mean, it's just as added protection and precaution.
I think it's smart.
Yeah, I agree.
Okay? Because then Lisa someday could use Venmo to pay for something. There you go.
Everything. Anything, everything.
Is there any, are there any other ques, are there any questions for Stephanie? Thank you, Stephanie.
All right, thank you.
For everything you do. Now, speaking of Maroon Devil Network, Toby, can you come in and talk about the three options or the three possibilities on that? Do you need this to work from? You didn't know you were going to do this. It's all right.
So following our last meeting, I met with Neil Blankenship and Jeff Barnes. We discussed the same things that we discussed with you as a board. And what we came up with were, I'm assuming you have a copy of that?
They do. They should, yes.
What we, what we essentially come up with was to use the three methods that made the most sense to us and leave out the pay-per-view portion of it. So you see those listed there. I'll be frank, the revenue potential under each one is, that's a guesstimate at best. It's probably nowhere near accurate what it'll actually be in the long term. But I wanted to give you something to put your eyes on and be able to see that we are talking about a revenue stream for athletics that should help them out in a, in a good way. And all while not hurting our product in the community itself. So just real quickly, you can see there the Watch Page ads are some of the, we already had. Once the bank account becomes active, we'll be able to collect that. It's almost two thousand dollars now. Both Coach Blankenship and Coach Mara were in agreement about adding additional level to the banner package sales, which is supposed to start sometime this week, that we could use for Maroon Devil broadcasts. And that money goes to athletics as well. And then we were in agreement about charging a monthly fee for all live broadcasts on the Maroon Devil Network. And you can see there that the charge choice was a little bit different. It was my idea. But I believe it's the right idea. It was only five dollars per month, but if you look at what we offer, we don't offer a ton. In the month of August, we would offer basically two football games. And so that's pretty fair without. The thought process behind that is pretty simple. If we've got fifteen hundred viewers right now, I would like to keep this at at least a thousand. And I think that price point would do that. And by doing that, we make money in the end. Plus we get our product seen by our viewers everywhere around. The fee itself would cover just live broadcasts. If you chose not to pay that monthly fee, you could still watch content on our YouTube channel. You just wouldn't be able to see anything that's live. So that to me sounds fair. It also gives us a little bit more of a buffer when it comes to away football games as to what our product is. And if we were turned down at the last possible minute, we're just getting off of that broadcast live. So I think it gives us the best of all possible outcomes. Do you have any questions or concerns or items that we need to talk about?
Is the, go ahead. Is the five dollars per month, is that something when they sign up, it's like an automatic charge?
It is.
Okay, would there be an option to do that? Or if you pay for a year, you get like a little bit of a price cut for fifty? Can you do that?
YouTube does not offer that, as we know.
Okay.
Once we go ahead with signing up and finishing our signup process, we'll learn more. But on the outside looking in, it appears as though they are only monthly charging.
Okay, and you may mention that and I just can't remember.
Can you fluctuate that monthly price? Like say, could you say if we were going to have four football games that you could view in a month? Could you say, all right, this month's going to be twenty dollars instead of five?
Yeah, you have the option.
I know that's complicated, but.
Yeah, you have the option, I would assume, of resetting it every month.
The only problem is if you have people with their card numbers saved and then all of a sudden it's charging them ten dollars when they signed up for something that's five dollars. You'd want a way to communicate that.
Might, might be a way to just say ten, ten dollars a month and leave it at that, you know? Not fluctuate between five and twenty or whatever.
I, I'll be honest with you, in this first year, I really prefer us to stick with five. And the reason is if I pay five dollars in August to watch whatever's live, then I'm going to be more apt to say, I'm not worried about that in September. And hey, you know what? There's a volleyball game on, so I've already paid for it, so I think I'll watch it. So I feel like we're getting a viewership that way. And it will not slit the throat of our basketball, volleyball, baseball, softball. We still would be able to make some money off of them. And I think that's as important to give those sports and those athletes as much exposure as we can as well. So that's, that's my thought process. Now, I may be wrong, but I really think that if we stay to that low price point, it will pay off in the long run.
How will that money, how will that money be collected? And who, who will be responsible for keeping up with who's paying?
YouTube does all of that. In the end, they will keep thirty percent and write us a check or deposit into that bank account seventy percent of the proceeds for that month.
So they keep up with all the, all the record keeping?
Correct.
And send us a report or something, or how is that?
I'm not sure how that would work. I'm sure we could ask for it if the case may be, but they're, that's their thirty percent. That's what they're earning their thirty percent off.
Could they generate a list of who, who has paid that?
I'm not sure how that works. That's another one of those things we'll learn more as we go further into it.
Go ahead, Joe.
So YouTube has a section called Analytics. And under Analytics, because we did do the membership for a very brief time way back when. And then, and then COVID hit and we decided it, you know, it's going to be free. And so, yes, you get a list of all the members, you learn who the members are. You can, and then you could actually send them messages through YouTube. So there's actually a lot of things outside of just getting their money that membership does for us as well. It gives us a marketing list if we wanted to market other things. You know, it gives us a lot of information. They tell us a lot of information about who the, who these people are, where they're located. So, yeah. And, and also back to your question, they also have levels of membership, too. You can do different levels. But I, I agree with Toby. I think keeping it simple, giving it five dollars. Because then I think people will just let it ride. And so we'll end up getting a year's worth of membership out of somebody instead of just football season. And someone will sign up for football and then they'll just cancel it. And we, you know, like Toby says, we'll cut the throats of basketball, volleyball, or not volleyball, but basketball and softball and baseball, some of the other sports.
I think it's a good start to learn and then see what happens. We can always find better ways. We can always do those when we learn how to do them.
And I think that was part of Toby's and, and Jeff and Neil's and, and Joe's thought process as well. This is, this is your number one. And, and let's start and let's build a following. I think that what we'll see also through this is that more people will subscribe, which will bring in more money as well. In the long run. And then this can be reassessed at the end of the twenty-four, twenty-five school year. And if the board wants to move it to ten dollars or at that point, and, and see how that impacts viewership. Then that can be done. My, my one question, Toby, I hadn't thought about this until just now, is that if, if it rolls each month, does that include June and July?
I don't know that. And the other question that we had.
Well, June would cover the graduation.
Yes, but I'm thinking about July specifically because I don't know what we broadcast in July.
Nothing.
School board meeting.
Yes.
Just five bucks, you got school board meeting.
The, the other thing that Joe brought up when he and I were talking about it is we don't know if you subscribe today on the tenth, if your subscription runs to July tenth or to June thirtieth. So if you were to subscribe at June twenty-ninth, do you get one day or do you get a month from that time? We don't know the answer to that. So those are all things that we're going to have to figure out as we go along. I, I think the bottom line for us as a group is that we're going from zero revenue stream for athletics to a minimum potential of a thousand or more, which would have been more than had we done a pay-per-view. So we're on the right track. And I think we just continue, as you've already pointed out, to, to grow this as we move along. And it is also worth noting that the, Joe had found on YouTube when he was doing research that they have some revenue sections on there for merchandise. And so Neil and Jeff are already working through some of that with BSN and trying to do some things with the merchandising page. And if we could get that set up where BSN handled it, then that gives them an additional revenue stream without having to add the work to it, plus a place to advertise it. So I think there's a lot of win-win scenarios in there for, for athletics and us as a Maroon Devil Network.
What, uh, think of my question. When it comes to the ads, how does that work? Like what control do we have over ads? Like do we pick what ads are being played and that kind of thing?
Well, there's two separate types of ads. The first is the YouTube ad, which we have zero control over. It will run, we won't be able to choose what it is. Their analytics drives the market in terms of what we're putting out there, trying to match that. Now, when it comes to the additional tier of advertising on the Maroon Devil Network, we control all of that.
Okay.
And that will be structured ever how.
That's like our own commercials.
That's our own commercials. We're going to keep it to five simply because that doesn't overwork Joe and being able to put those together.
Okay.
And we would be able to run them all season from the start of the year to the end of the year. We've left open with Coach Blankenship and Coach Mara opportunities to advertise with those people any way they want to. If they want to say this is the X game of the week or game of the night, then they can say that. Or whatever they want to do that they feel best adds value to what they're selling.
So, but we have no, no control over what comes through YouTube ads? Okay. And I don't ever watch, truthfully, I don't really ever watch the, because I feel like I'm always at like one of my kids' games. And so I don't usually actually watch on TV. But in that, have we ever, or could we ever use our advertising to have like, seen like the QR codes for like the Ring Fund and stuff like that? Do we do that kind of thing?
Yes.
Yeah, okay. So people could start utilizing that to, for donations?
And we also use it for our own public service announcements.
Okay, perfect. Because that could be almost like a fundraising stream, too. And like I said, we may already do that and I just don't know.
So YouTube would just upload the money to that new account?
Yep.
Each month?
Yep.
Yeah, I think this would be a good place to start. I'll just be interested to see, I know we all get hung up on numbers and stuff, but I was really astonished at the viewership during football season with some of them being audio only last year. And of course, I know we made it, some of those were playoff games as well. But I think after we see what this year will do, that'll be a good base. But I think after we see what this year will do, that'll be a good baseline, because, you know, we're using the seventy-five percent loss in viewership and still getting maybe, I mean, like, if we get nine thou, I think it was thirty thousand, like, thirty thousand and some change. So nine thousand would be the twenty-five percent mark if they stayed. So I think we need to, once this year progresses, we'll see those numbers, and I think it'll be a good way to start, for sure.
Now, it does bear pointing out to you that with the playoffs, we've been able to do what we do because we don't sell ads.
Gotcha.
And so now that we are officially selling ads, it's going to be a sale that we make to the High School Athletic Association that we're not, and we have to remove all of those, or that we are, and we have to pay a fee of a thousand dollars to broadcast games.
Per game or for...
Per game.
I guess one point I was trying to make is, I just think that, and it's not just a football mind, but I think since it's an outside sport, that you're going to have more viewership for that regardless of basketball and volleyball. Basketball and volleyball, that gym can only hold so many people. And every game that I went to, there was very, very minimal seating. So if you're not going to come, that's your only other alternative. Now, football, I went to two games, and I could probably count, if I took off my shoes, I could count the attendance over on the visitor side, you know? And it was due to weather, where you're not going to have that effect, well, if it's snow, of course, we might call it, but in the, I just don't think that changing the platform is going to hurt volleyball and basketball as much as people think it will. And I'm not just disregarding those two sports, I'm just saying I think that football would be the biggest thing that it would, that weather would impact, you know?
People are more likely to come into a controlled environment where there's a level of weather, versus being outside where it's thirty degrees.
But I also think this is a very good starting point to, we may not change it.
It's a good compromise.
Yeah, they say, yeah, they say, it works out good for everybody or whatever. Because like you said, zero revenue, I mean, some revenue is better, a whole lot better than zero revenue, you know, so.
And then, so if somebody were, their kid was playing here, it was a, they were the visiting team, and they wanted to watch our broadcast, they're at least paying one month, and potentially they're just going to stick with it, right? Am I right?
Correct.
Okay. Because it's not a pay-per-view at that point, it's a subscription.
Correct.
It could be a pay-per-view if they pay for that event, and then they just have to cancel.
Right, and then cancel it, right.
Which is fine.
Right. And about half the people will remember, do that, and half won't, yeah.
And we think it'll actually help, it won't hurt our viewership in-house either. By that, we feel like we have a good, sizable portion who go to the game and watch the game. And the game is delayed in real time, so they're watching the play, then watching the play, and then watching a replay of the play, and hearing commentary the whole time. I don't think five dollars is going to sway that whole thing.
That's true.
I think those folks who do that are used to doing that, and that's just the way they watch a game now.
And I think that advertisement's going to be, I think people would jump to that, too, if they knew that.
Yeah. It should be a seller for them.
So are we comfortable with moving forward with this, what's it called, proposal? At five dollars a month to start, are we good with that?
Yeah.
Okay? And, you know, kudos again to Toby and his group for working this out. I really appreciate that. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Toby. You have in your pack, or no, you had it on your table, an RFQ that I would like to put out for design services for the middle school. One of the things that the state is looking for as far as the grants are concerned is how close are you to being shovel-ready? And the more that we have in place, the better off that we are. This RFQ allows for us to control each phase so that we don't have to jump in all at once and have the complete design bid-ready, paid for it all at one time. This allows us to move and say, we want to do this, and we want to do this, but we can't do that right now because we just don't have the funding. Okay? I believe that this is also important for our local government, because they're going to want to see that we're serious, and they're going to want to see what the cost is going to be. John Hitting, one of our lawyers, has suggested that we develop memorandums of understanding with local government before we submit our grant this time, if we can get all those pieces in place so that we will all be, all of the government entities will be on the same page. He specifically mentioned the fact that one of our, one of the districts here in western North Carolina got a grant, then sent it back, and he said, that's a debacle. We don't need to do that. Okay? So I intend to submit or to put out this RFQ. It's been through Stephanie, it's been through our lawyers, and then see what the return is on that. We are not committing ourselves to spending any money with this. Correct? Okay. All right? Is there any hesitation on your part?
Just on that note, I know last time we met, we talked about the buildings are to be torn down. I haven't been up there, have they torn the buildings down yet?
They have not yet, to my knowledge. What I understand is the former owner is working on that a bit at a time. I've had conversation with two people to push that forward. Jerry and Lisa and I have a meeting tomorrow with Kenneth Parton and Kevin Siegel and Lottie Barker to talk about the land above the high school, the forty-five acres. And we can help emphasize that we need to be a united front on this and get those taken down as soon as possible. Okay? I do know that Cadet Cochran moved his equipment up to the land on Black Hill, I believe, last Friday, and is going to start burning the brush piles and taking down trees. We need to get an erosion plan in place before we get too far into that. You can do something on an acre of ground, but if you go beyond an acre, you have to have an erosion plan. And I've got some numbers to call to see how much that will cost. Okay? Did that answer your question?
It does. I mean, I wouldn't move on the erosion plan to pay for that until we get the buildings down and burn the brush piles that's there.
Yeah.
Yet, do we?
We're going to need it sooner than later, okay, in my opinion, because we've got several acres that are sitting there where we need to take down trees. And my concern is, at least let's investigate legally what we can do without an erosion plan, if we can go ahead and continue to take down trees. Okay? I don't intend to start moving any land yet. Okay?
You're going to have to have an erosion plan at some point, anyway.
Yeah. And that's part of this as well. That's included in here. So let's see how that all turns. So RL, probably we could wait until this comes through and make that all part of the same package. That's a wise thing. Okay?
Have you talked to Mr. Corbin and Mike?
I want to say, if we can get some pictures of that, too.
That's important. And I have not spoken with Senator Corbin or Representative Clampett about this since I was in Raleigh, but they are very much on board. Okay?
That's where I've been there, that they're ready to go help us, but we need to shut some, get that prepared, and just keep them involved in it, and show them. Be good to show them the site one day, once they clean that.
That would be a good move, or at least, as Mitch said, get them some pictures.
Yeah.
They're fairly busy right now.
Oh, yeah, right now, would be out of the question.
Well, you know, Mike is in town on the weekends, and he'd be happy to go up there and walk around. Excuse me, Representative Clampett. But Senator Corbin is in high demand right now. High demand. Okay? So I would like to go ahead and release this. Okay? I don't know that it necessarily takes an official vote. Does that take a vote, or can we just go ahead and do that? Just if we're all on the same page. Okay? You've got a couple of policies that I included in your pack or online. Those particular policies are about artificial intelligence. And that issue is going to be huge in all of our lives. As a matter of fact, it already is. Do any of you use Google to ask questions? Have you noticed that the first thing that comes up now on a Google search is an AI response? Automatic. Okay? So we've got to have some pieces in place to help take care of our kids and our school system, and to make sure that everything is ethical. All right? I want you to look at those policies. And RL and Mitch have a bunch of other policies that they're going to look at, and we're going to schedule a meeting for next week. I just want you to have those. Okay?
Want to move these in with this package?
You've got them in there. They're in both places. I imagine that some of you have heard that we have staffing needs in the county, and that's true. Right now, between our elementary schools, we're looking for four teachers, and not including an art teacher. We also need an EC teacher at West. EC is a high-demand item right now. Trying to find people who have the certification in EC or are willing to get it is pretty difficult, because the EC teacher life is pretty complicated with paperwork and with working with kids, too. The middle school only needs one position right now, and that's a CTE position. High school, we have four or three core positions that we need right now, and a CTE position. And we could actually use another core position in there, we could use another math teacher as well. Okay? We can function with what we have in math, but we need more, or we could use more. We're looking, we're offering signing bonuses. We're not in this boat by ourselves. I had a conversation today with one of our local districts, and they're getting applicants that have four-year degrees, but they don't have teaching certificates. That's not uncommon. So Tommy, we're offering funding, we're doing what we can do, and we'll talk about some other ideas in a little while about what we might be able to do to help encourage people. I asked HR today if these are abnormally large numbers, and they're not really. This is what we see just about every year. The problem is finding people who want, are looking for jobs. What we're experiencing right now is a high-demand job and less applicants than we've ever seen before, because there is a teacher shortage. Teacher shortage. Okay?
The ones I know, I ask a lot of these seniors, that I know, what they're going to major in, and to the latter, none of them are education. That's the answer I want a lot of times, because you want those folks to come back here, our local. They don't want to go into it. If they have just a degree, say, a four-year degree in math or science or whatever it is, can they take online courses over a couple of years and get the certification? Can they get most of it online?
Almost everything online now. Yeah, even the P, professional education programs, the PEPs, for people that come in, the EPPs, they have a, if you have a four-year degree, there's nothing that you have to take online. You can be employed, be in a classroom, and finish your, and us be paying you just like a regular teacher, and the years that you pay through that whole window of time. We've got several people that are currently employed, doing that, using that to their advantage. What we're running into is the fact that we just have less classically trained educators than we ever ever seen. I may have told you all this last time, but in 2018, when I first took this position, went through a hiring team, had twenty-one classically trained, qualified athletes for K-5 jobs. I had two, two, thank you, hired over. It's just it.
And it's crazy. It's not just us. It's nationwide. And when you talk about applicant pools, you have to think pre-COVID or post-COVID now. Pre-COVID, you had that. Post-COVID, we're dealing with volleyball now. So. Just want you to know that there's speculation out in the community. Do we have openings? Yes. Is it abnormally large? No. Are we concerned? Yes. And we're doing everything we can to fill those. And we'll keep trying. Okay? Any thoughts or questions? We'll be okay. I'm a man of faith, and I believe it. We'll be okay. Mr. White, that's all that is in the discussion. Can we move to action?
I think we can.
All right. Then I would recommend that the Swain County Board of Education approve the consent agenda, including all personnel, and the minutes from the May sixteenth, 2024 meeting.
Motion.
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor, raise your hands. Pass the members.
I also recommend that the Swain County Board of Education approve the CTE plan as presented by Ms. Sneed.
Motion.
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor, raise your hands. Pass the members.
I recommend the Swain County School Board approve the bids from child nutrition for U.S. Foods, pet dairy, and Coca-Cola as presented by Ms. Herron.
Move.
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor, raise your hands. Pass the members.
I recommend Swain County School Board approve the CEP process for the twenty-four, twenty-five school year.
Motion.
Second.
Further discussion? All in favor, raise your hands. Pass the members.
I recommend the Swain County Board of Education approve the budget amendments as presented by Ms. Tredway.
Move.
Second.
Further discussion? All in favor, raise your hand. Pass the members.
I recommend the Swain County Board of Education approve the insurance renewals as presented by Ms. Tredway.
Motion.
Second.
Further discussion? All in favor, raise your hands. Pass the members.
I recommend the Swain County School Board approve the new bank account as presented by Ms. Tredway.
Motion.
Second.
Further discussion? All in favor, raise your hands. Pass the members.
Those are all of the action items. We have another board meeting on June the twenty-seventh. I believe we're going to start at five o'clock. We can start at any time that you want to on that. And we will meet downstairs for that meeting, not up here.
Thursday.
It's a Thursday. We have to have it close to the thirtieth, because it is a closeout meeting. There will be other items on there as well, some personnel that I'm looking at as well. Is five o'clock a good starting time? Or do you want to go earlier? What do you want to do?
That's fine.
Five o'clock, okay? Okay? Jerry, do you have an appointment today?
I will, but right now, Doug.
Okay. All right. So we'll meet on June twenty-seventh. Our next meeting would be July the eighth. May I recommend, and you don't have to accept this if you don't want to, may I recommend that we move that to the fifteenth, since we will have just met on the twenty-seventh? That will give us an opportunity. Is that okay with your calendar?
I have it in as the fifteenth, so we...
Well, I had spoken about that already, but we never really came to consensus.
That's good with me.
Is that okay, July the fifteenth?
Are we doing six or five on that one?
I don't care.
That's a Monday.
It is a Monday, yes.
Yeah, that's a Monday.
Is that okay, RL?
I believe so.
Okay.
I think I'm going to be going to the next Monday, but I think I'm here that Monday.
Okay. We'll check and see, and if there's a conflict, let me know, and we'll communicate. Is that okay with you, Mitch?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, July fifteenth, we'll meet here at five o'clock for our July meeting. Okay? There are several transfers that are happening. You can see those in your confidential agenda. And other than that, I would like for us to go to closed session to talk about a couple of things. But that's the agenda.
Do I have a motion to go into closed session?